Good evening, everybody. It's February 27. Bill, this is the regular town board meeting for the town of Ryanbeck. Would everybody please join us for the call? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. May I have a motion to approve our prior minutes of February 13?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any approved? Passes unanimously. Josh Pulver, our deputy supervisor, is absent today. Oh, we have a presentation from Skate Park USA.
He just talked in on the phone, so he's ready to go.
Is he ready to go? Who is there?
That's, um, Alec Gabelin.
Alec, hi. Hey, Alec. We have Skate Park USA here. They've been working on, with Bryant Town, the park committee and the town board, on a proposal for Phase One of our skate park. And what Phase One is, is going to be a small start to the skate park, designed so that Phase Two, which is a bigger portion, can be put on when we have more money. And I think we have...
He has two options that he wants to go with.
How much do we have budgeted for this, Brian?
I think it's like $120.
$120, a little bit more. So we're going to look at two options for the skate park. Brian, you want to come up and say anything?
Um, I don't really have much to say. Just that there's...
Now you have to buy it. You bought it.
Yeah. So there's two, uh, both have two phases. The, uh, there's a full concrete phase. But, I mean, he'll tell you all this if you want.
Okay. Brian's with the park committee and he's spearheading this skate park with Michael DiCola and the rest of the committee. So, Alec, why don't you take it away?
Can I hear? Alec, can you hear us?
Are you on mute? We can't hear you, Alec.
Alec, we can't hear you, buddy. It's on mute. I'm on mute. No, which... I don't want... Here, let me... Most of them tell me.
Just test out your... Yes. We can't hear you, though.
Is your volume up, Alec?
It's on the top all the way. Alec, can you hear me? We can't hear you. I mean...
What's his phone number or call number?
Here, I'll give you a phone number to call. You ready?
Call that number for any problems in that, or any neighboring community, anytime of the day or night. Repeat the phone number, please. You want to do that over the air or...
Yeah, if you... I don't care.
Okay.
I could look... Can you hear me, Alec? You could blank that out on the tape, by the way.
Oh, just post it. As I said, any concerns or questions, 24/7, 360.
Wait a minute. One of the problems is my phone doesn't take place.
I'm awful slow. I said you're the smartest guy on the board.
That's you, right?
Yes, that's me.
All right. Next, you're now live.
Wow, we did it.
Perfect, perfect. Let me do this.
Thanks for joining us.
All right. Perfect. All right, can anybody, everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Um, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here real quick. Um, yeah, just a quick intro. Uh, yeah, my name's Alec. Uh, I work with American Real Company. Uh, we've been around since, uh, 1998. Uh, so yeah, we built over 3,000 skate parks, um, in all 50 states and about 40 countries. So I'm definitely really, uh, excited to be a part of this project and kind of present these two concepts. And then, uh, yeah, hopefully, uh, come out of this meeting with, uh, one of the designs selected, so...
Great, let's see.
All right. So I just share my screen and saying... Uh, so you're gonna have to allow me to share my screen here.
You want me to try and help you?
If I... Tried to get, uh...
Go to Zoom.
There he is.
And they're hoping we don't get bored. And we're having a ball bearing him.
See, are you sharing your screen?
No, you have to give them permission to share the screen.
No.
I have to kill time somehow.
No, you have the only comput... Oh, Sarah, you have the comput... Oh, okay. Wow. Okay. I'm just gonna stay out of this one.
I decided I don't want to manage this while we're out here. So much for my desires.
Well... Sarah has to do that.
There you go. All right, I think I have it here.
Careful.
All right. All right, everybody, can everybody see that?
No, because it...
Working out, right?
Yeah, except it's...
Just, uh, you just gotta maximize it up in here.
Oh. That's what that is. Clear as mud.
So is everybody seeing that top view of the skate park?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Um, yeah, so this is one of the, uh, concepts that we put together. Um, so, uh, like it was mentioned, we're doing a two-phase project. Um, so basically, for this design, what we're talking about to start is... Can everybody see my mouse on there?
Yes.
See that? Okay. So yeah, what we're talking about is basically this rectangular shape with these ramps, uh, as the Phase One. Um, so this is one option. So we're basically presenting a, uh, above-ground option versus a concrete option here, uh, which I'll go back to that design. Um, for this design, um, here's another rendering here. So basically, you're getting, um, a street run, uh, which is really cool, highly usable. Uh, and then you're also getting, um, a half bike. So, um, a half bike is one of the most, you know, requested features, um, you know, in a skate park. Um, this stuff is, um, steel frame with a steel ride surface, so it is, um, really durable. Um, you know, the downside of this is it's, you know, not as, you know, as tightly pleasing as a concrete park. Um, and then blending it into, um, you know, the Phase Two. Um, the positives of this design is you are getting more, um, more banker bucks, so to speak. You are getting something that more people can ride at one time. Um, so that's one of the, you know, benefits of that. Um, so you can see from this half bike, you can ride it here and then kind of just roll through the street section as well. Um, so that's Option One. Um, Option Two, um, basically, you can see on here, there's this kind of thin, thin line here. So this is dividing, so this is Phase One, right here. Um, so yeah, this is a really, really cool, uh, really cool design. Uh, this is another street run area. Um, so you have these, um, concrete quarter pipes that go to this center set with, um, a grindbox, grind rail. We did a cool, um, you know, custom color scheme there. Um, you can see that, yeah, kind of blends to the environment a little bit more. Um, yeah, these, um, you know, it's kind of burned up in the back here. Um, you don't need, um, garb, you know, because it is burned up, you don't have to put guard rails and things like this so it doesn't blend, um, you know, into the environment well. Um, yeah, the downside of this one is you're not getting, um, like that half bike type feature. So you are getting a little bit less usable space, but, um, you are getting a concrete park that's gonna be, um, extremely durable. It's gonna be easy for us to come in and, you know, attach a Phase Two next to it. Um, so yeah, that's how the run-through with both of those options there. Um, we do have a spot saved in our timeline for either of these, um, builds on our build schedule, so, um, both the timelines will be pretty similar, um, depending on which option you choose. But, um, yeah, just I wanted to run through both of those and...
Alec, can you hear me?
See if there's any initial questions.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, what size are these? Are they both the same size?
They are very similar in size. Um, this, this one is about, um, you're looking at about 80 by 25, uh, feet for this, uh, concrete option for Phase One. Um, and then we get to Phase Two here. Um, let's see. I don't have the dimensions, but I... This would be very, like, slightly bigger. So yeah, probably like 80 by, uh, 35 or so for this, uh, above-ground option. Um, so yeah, not a ton of difference.
And do you have, do you have Phase Two for each of the two Phase One designs? A sketch of it, so we could see how it would build out?
This, this, this is Phase Two right here.
Yep, so this is, uh...
Okay, I got it. I got it.
Yep.
And can you show us the other option, the second option with the orange?
Yep. Yep. So yeah, here's, here's Phase Two for the second option. You can kind of see it's this, um, highlighted area. So we've got a radius area that's really popular.
And what, so that's Phase One and Two of the second option together.
Absolutely. Can you go back to the top, uh, top-down view?
Yeah.
See this line right here?
Yes.
This is Phase One, and that's Phase Two.
Got it. And how, how big is the finished area of each?
Um, how big is the overall finished area?
With Phase Two?
Um, let's see here.
Like for the orange option, which I'm calling Option Two?
Yep. So you're looking at, um, it'd be, uh... Yeah, you'd be at like 50, 56 wide, um, by 85 feet long. Um, you can't see these burns on the outside, so that would extend it a little bit.
Sure.
Past that. But the overall skatable area would be, um, yeah, about 56 by 85, um, would be your skatable area.
And for the first option, what's the total area?
Yeah, let's see if I have it. Yeah, unfortunately, our designers not put the dimensions on that top view there. But yeah, that does kind of break out the, the top view, um, so you can't see out of this phase that are divided. Um, it would be, it would be very similar footprint, um, overall.
And what's the price of each option?
Yep. Um, so yeah, they're, they're both gonna be exactly the same price. So Phase One, um, is basically $130,000. Um, and then the Phase Two estimate is, um, $225,000.
Okay. Um, does anybody on the board have any questions or... And how long would this take to construct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How long would it take to construct it?
Yeah, um, so with the concrete park, you're probably looking at, um, probably 45 weeks on site, um, right now. So, uh, the cool thing is, since we have been, um, involved in this process a long, like, our concrete crews are actually booked out like 14 months. However, um, we do have a spot, um, you know, for you all, um, kind of in, uh, mid, early summer to midsummer. Um, so that's actually, you know, a really good, um, really good timeline, um, there. So you got to be starting in early summer and, uh, 45 feet, um, on-site build time.
So the, the price includes the concrete? It's everything?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments?
My only comment is, I personally like the, the concrete because I think it just looks better.
The number two with the orange? Yeah.
Um, and I feel like, you know, you can like push it around it and it's just nicer.
Yeah.
And I feel like, you know, if we go on to Phase Two, we can raise money and stuff. But, uh, I don't know, just, it's just overall nicer.
Should we, I mean, I agree. I don't know what the board thinks. I would take the skate park committee's recommendation and the...
I'd be shouting everyone on the committee and they'll...
Should we put it on our town website and ask for comments and then approve it?
We might not get on this summer, then.
Well, I mean, why do we have to choose? Why don't we just commit to doing it? Can't we choose which one we do in a couple of weeks?
I guess.
Did you hear that, Stale?
Concrete now.
No, I did not.
The question is, if we commit to doing it, we can get the scheduled slot. And then how much longer do we have before we have to decide which option?
Yeah, um, we, we would. I really want to decide, you know, as quickly as possible, just so we, like I did, you know, like I mentioned, we are, um, you know, holding that to our agreement. So we, we would want to, um, get that build, build concrete going.
Yeah, hold on. Alex, it's Elizabeth. Yeah, we're saying we can commit. We just don't want to decide between one or two before we get some feedback from the community.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah, that would be adorable. Yeah, I think we could do, since they're both the same price, we could do, um, yeah, basically a build, a build agreement, not to, you know, add that under the $30,000 number.
Yep.
Um, and then, yeah, that would get you on the schedule.
I just want a firm start time. And our attorney has to approve the deal.
Okay, yep.
Okay, any, any other questions from the public?
Um, so when we first had these options, I shared them with Chris from the Wardroom Skate shop in Tampa. And he talked to a bunch of the skaters in Tampa.
Yeah, I just want to be able to put it on the website and have people, you know, look at it and comment if they want to. There's no one here. And it's something that, you know, I just don't, I don't know how you guys feel, like, just like the public to have some time to... We could say we're recommending Option Two. What do you think?
Yeah, and, and one thing I will say, uh, you know, skate parks 24/7, um, obviously you have, uh, you know, someone in the group that knows skate parks that, um, you know, has kind of a pulse on it in the community. Um, so yeah, it's like, if you do, uh, take skate parks out to public comment, you'll get, because everybody has, you know, a million ideas.
Yeah, we're, we're used to dealing with a million ideas from the public. We got you.
You know, so yeah, you would just want to basically say Option A or Option B.
Yeah, we're, we're good with that. Yep. We're recommending Option Two with the orange, and we want the public to have the opportunity to see it.
Option Two is the one with the...
Orange. No, Option Two is the one with the orange, the all-concrete. All right, any other questions for Alex? Will you please make sure that the, uh, that the clerk gets, um, the, the contract? And I'll do a resolution from the floor right now. Can he email this to me tonight? Can you please email to the clerk tonight? Alex?
No, yes.
Okay. Hi.
Stand in front of the mic.
This may be a town...
What's your name?
Autumn Prizano.
Hi, Autumn.
Uh, this may be like a more town-oriented question, but do we know where it's going?
Yes, we have a, we have an approved, uh, master plan for the park. Our master plan for our park is on our website, and it's just to the, uh, west of our pavilion and to the south of our baseball field. So it's an approved spot. Sure, thanks for asking. Okay, any other questions? All right, Alex, thanks. We'll do a resolution from the floor and we'll be in touch.
Perfect.
Thank you. Sure, bye-bye.
Bye.
Do we have a resolution for this, or do we have to...
No, we're just showing...
Okay. Uh, I'd like to propose Resolution 2023-085 to, uh, allow the supervisor to approve a design-build order for Phase One of the skate park, designed to be determined and with the attorney's approval of the contract with...
Did you put it in the roundtable?
American ramps, not to exceed $130,000.
A motion, Elizabeth? He quoted.
I'm trying to get it out.
Well, he, uh, he quoted $135.
I think he said $130 and $225.
Yes. That's the note down there.
And that's what we have in our budget, so...
I should have worn my hearing.
Yeah. Um, I, I think I got everything, Joan?
I think it's covered.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Uh, who, did I motion that and you said it?
You did.
Okay. Um, we're gonna put these two designs on our website. We're gonna let the public know that we have, um, recommended Design Two, which is the all-concrete with the custom orange. Um, we'll tell them to call either...
We can do any color.
Ooh.
Why don't we do school colors? Purple and... What's the school color?
Purple.
And Amber doesn't even go to Ryanbeck, but she knows our colors. Red, she's a red hooker. Red hooker?
No, I don't like that.
Red cloche? My Becky is, sorry. Everybody be nice. Um, okay, am I missing anything? And we'll say public can contact the town board. We'll have emails and stuff on there. If we don't hear anything, we'll approve it. Uh, Design Number Two, sign the agreement and get it done. Yes?
Hi, um, I just wanted to ask, how long will both...
Can you state your name?
I'm sorry. I'm Eric Seidman.
Hi, Eric.
Hi, thanks, too. Um, how long will both, uh, plans be up on the website? And how long will the comment period be?
We'll have it up for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I mean, we'd like to get this... I think we have to... Should we leave it up until our next meeting? Because we can approve the, uh, we can approve the plan and then we just have to lock into the design.
And will it be up pretty instantaneously?
I think Joan will probably have it up, weather permitting, by about 9:00 tomorrow morning, if I know our clock.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else, any other comments? Well, this is exciting, Brian. Thanks for moving it along. Um, it would be great if we got this open for the kids this summer. We got the field open, we got the... We have, we're supposed to have the snow fence going in tomorrow so that practice can happen Wednesday, but we may get weathered for that.
Do you have the, this stuff, or should I resend it to Joan?
Resend it all to Joanie.
Okay, I'll do that right now.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay. A couple of amendments. Property taxes are due by tomorrow. Um, and, uh, there's a 2% late fee that will be added as of March 1st. And that's not by us, that's by the state. Um, so get your property taxes in. We need volunteers. We have vacancies on our conservation advisory board, our planning board, our zoning board, and our board of assessment review. If you want to get involved and help the town, please fill out, uh, an application and, and help us. We need volunteers. Um, all dogs must be leashed at the park. We've had pretty much a disaster of dogs running and, um, running, um, going to the bathroom on our new field. Uh, we're putting up a snow fence for that. It will be fenced in. Um, people are not being great citizens with their dogs. And if it keeps up, we'll have to look at banning dogs from the park. Dogs are running wild, attacking people. Dogs belong on leashes. We have a leash law in the town.
Who, who's in charge of, uh, citing of people?
The police and our dog, and our animal control, our dog controller, sir. What? No, it's not you. It's not you. Brian is also our news reporting administrator. No, you don't have to do that. You have to do everything else, including setting up the zooms, but...
Next time, thanks.
Uh, so yeah, we're having a big issue with dogs. And while we love them, they belong on leashes. Um, anything else? Okay. Um, I need a motion for Resolution 223-077, Recreation Preseason Hire for 2023. That's Alan. May I have a second? Ed, did I hear you?
No.
All right, Chauncey. Sleepy week. Uh, any questions or comments?
This is just another wave of hiring for summer camp.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, make a resolution for 2023-078 for the Landsman Kill parking permission. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. This is the, um, horse riding through the kill. They do it every year and park their trailers down by our landfill and right on the road by our, our field. So they reached out again to see if they could, and I think it would be great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2023-079 to hire an assessor's aide.
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Um, are there any questions or comments? I would say that our assessor's office was slammed by an unfunded state mandate to send out a second notice, letting people know that their exemptions were due by March 1st. And, uh, I think we had about 4,000 calls over two days. So thank you, Governor Hoco. Um, and we are gonna hire some more help, which we need anyway. Uh, any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Uh, and our assessor's department is a fantastic job. Uh, I need a motion for 2023-081, our transfer station hauler bid.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Uh, any questions or comments?
Yeah, we just need a new contract. Our old contract is up this March, so we'll have to get a new hauler and it looks like it's gonna be Royal.
Is Royal interested in continuing?
Royal wants it.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, I, uh, need a motion for Resolution 2023-081, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts 2D. Thanks. Uh, I'll make a second. Any, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2023-082, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts 2D.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll make a motion for 2023 083 for our capital projects abstract. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Are there any comments, questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, make a motion for 2023 084, our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Are there any, uh, questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes unanimously. Um, is there any new business before the board? Discussion item. Our clerks are away on the 24th for a clerky, uh, symposium. It's not that they could be any better, but it's, it's an information thing for them, so we need to cancel our meeting on the 24th and reschedule. Would you guys like to reschedule it for later that week?
They just go to today or?
No, it's a two-day thing. It's all sorts of fun things. Notary laws have changed. It's more difficult to be a notary now. Um, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two, twenty-six?
No, the meeting is the 24th. Our conference is 24, 25.
Yeah, it's got to be before then.
Or, uh, how about Tuesday? Because I think there's court on, oh, you're not here on Tuesday either, are you, Joan?
No.
Um, there's court on Wednesday, there's zoning on Thursday, there's planning board. What about if we just wait until our next meeting? Because our next meeting is on the 8th. Let's just cancel it. Is that all right, Joan? We'll tell Shelley?
Yeah.
Okay, we're canceling our meeting on the 24th. Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the financial history of two specific employees. I'd like to discuss a map, a proposed acquisition of real estate, and I'd like to discuss a matter related to discipline of a particular person.
Make a motion?
Sure. Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back.
The acquisition would be something that you guys want to purchase from someone else?
Somebody wants to give us something. Okay, we're back in from our executive session. Um, anything else?[1789.68]